Members, please take your seats. Guests, please clear the floor. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. And to my colleagues, good morning again. I note that the hour has come, and that a quorum of this council is present. This council is now coming to orders. Members will take their seats. Visitors will retire to the seats outside the rails. We're asking for all conversations to cease and/or take it outside the chambers. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Reverend Jay- Jason Ferris. He is the pastor and head of the staff of Old Pine Street Presbyterian Church in South Philadelphia, First Council Somatic District. He is here today as the guest of council member Squiller. I would ask all members to please rise, as well as all guests.
Thank you. It is truly an honor to be here. I just want to say a quick word about the church I serve. We're on the corner of Fourth and Pine. We were opened in 1768. We're still in our same building. And if you walk by our churchyard, you'll see a number of these little 13-star flags, over 200 of them. Those mark the graves of men who fought in the Revolutionary War. And I just thought it would be a nice thing to acknowledge today, because it's the 80th anniversary of D-Day, that what we're doing in this room, this democratic experiment, never happens perfectly, but it was important enough to a lot of people to give their lives to. And certainly, the people in my church who fought believed that the government should belong to the people, not to a king. And that's why they gave their lives. So it's an honor to be here, and I would love it so you could- we could join our hearts together in prayer. Lord, make us instruments of your justice. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is harm, let us offer forgiveness. Where there is doubt, let us share faith. Where there is despair, let us share hope. Where there is darkness, let us share light. Where there is sadness, let us share joy. Oh God, who made all things and who makes all things new, grant us the gratitude for this gift of life that you've given us, and give us the courage to see your goodness in every situation. In your name we pray, amen.
The chair thanks the reverend for his invocation, and council will now be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 30, 2024. The chair recognizes council member Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the approval of the Journal.
Is there a second? It has been moved in propriety seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 30, 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes councilman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the majority leader. The chair recognizes council member Brooks.
Good morning. On behalf of the minority, there are no leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the minority leader. The chair now recognizes council member Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on a calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in propriety seconded that the legislative matter stated by councilman Catherine Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair recognizes council member Jim Harity.
Hey, Council President. Just wanted to make mention that former councilman Mariano was in the room, but he has walked back out. So I tried.
Thank you very much. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning on behalf of all members of city council. We welcome you to our session, our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our city. We certainly invite you to come again. At this time, the chair recognizes council member Cindy Bass, who will present a resolution recognizing and honoring the Students in M. Hotepp Institute Charter School STEM Program for their dedication as changemakers ready to tackle humanity's most pressing challenges with determination and innovation. With Shirley Posey, director of the STEM program at M. Hotepp, and those accompanying her, please join the council member at the podium. The chair recognizes council member Jim Harity.
I'm sorry, again, Ricky came back in. So councilman Mariano. Yeah, yeah, always a councilman.
Joining council member Bass is councilman Catherine Gilmore Richardson, councilman Katsi Lizada, council member Jim Harity.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. So you know what? Let's add some energy into the room for these young people from M. Hotepp Charter High School who are really doing some really extraordinary work. They're doing- they are doing extraordinary work, not just here in the city of Philadelphia, but around the globe. And I want to, you know, we're going to talk about that really briefly. But I wanted to say that I went to visit M. Hotepp a few months ago, and when I saw the STEM program that they had and the aquaponics- listen, I learned a whole lot from everything that was done and was being built and manufactured right there on-site at the school. Just amazing. It brought tears to my eyes because we hear so much about the negativity around our young people. When we talk about kids who are doing it, they're doing it. I mean, they are doing it. And so we need to recognize them and applaud them and say, you know, keep on, keep on keeping on. It's going to be hard roads ahead. It's going to be tough times ahead. But you are on the right path, and we want to encourage you to keep doing what you're doing because you're making a difference, not just here in the city of Philadelphia, but really all across the world, all around the world. And so I want to read to you parts of our citation and, you know, honoring and recognizing the students of M. Hotepp Institute Charter High School STEM Program for their dedication as changemakers ready to tackle humanity's most pressing challenges with determination and innovation. And whereas, M. Hotepp's STEM program tackles real-world environmental issues, particularly those associated with climate change, starting in Jackson, Mississippi, where they design and produce water filters to address local water quality issues. They have also used advanced 3D printing technology to develop water filtration systems to provide local communities in need. And- Whereas, M. Hotepp's impact extended beyond the local boundaries, reaching international destinations such as Ghana. Here, they embarked on an educational odyssey, imparting knowledge about water quality to over 3,000 students. This included hands-on water testing and the introduction of groundbreaking water filtration technology. Their scientific outreach expanded further as the Gullah-Geechee community on Sappalon Island sought their expertise to tackle longstanding water quality concerns overlooked by the state of Georgia. And-
Whereas, these STEM ambassadors transcend crisis management. They embody the principles of sustainable development and promote eco-friendly practices wherever they go, currently donating 3D printers to bolster their mission. In southeast Georgia, they conducted a thorough analysis of water- of water quality at a local education institution, uncovering hazardous conditions that promoted health inspections and the revelation that the water supply was unfit for the consumption. And-
Whereas, the students of M. Hotepp STEM program ingeniously repurposed plastic bottles from recycled bins as raw material for filament products, fueling their 3D printers to create additional water filtration systems and hydroponic step-ups. They are cleaning up the city with Project Hasima and converting trash into STEM treasures of water filters- phosph- that's one even bigger for me. And hydroponics in Project NIA. They have established the first hydro-tech farm in Philadelphia to provide a solution for food deserts. Yeah, man. The project has provided 2.5 acres of non-GMO pesticide-free premium crop to the community and has expanded to the community's fridge. Their story emphasizes the innovation and commitment in the face of environmental and social challenges.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Philadelphia- the Philadelphia City Council hereby recognizes and honors the students at M. Hotepp Charter High School STEM Program. These young catalysts stand as a testament to the power of STEM offering tangible solutions to urgent challenges with local and global implications. Let's give them a round of applause. And I did want to highlight their recent trip to Ghana stands as a testament to their commitment. During their time in Ghana, the students and faculty of M. Hotepp Charter High School had a remarkable impact with their clean water initiative, where they provided access to clean water for over 1,200 Ghanaians, significantly enhancing the quality of life and health in several communities. And their STEM empowerment program, where they empowered over 500 Ghanian students with the knowledge and skills of STEM, focusing on sustainable solutions and innovative thinking. And this is the future, and we're so proud. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Shirley Posey.
Good morning. Or as we like to say at M. Hotepp Institute Charter High School, Hotepp, which means peace. So we're going to try this again. We say Hotepp, you all say Shimotep. So Hotepp- All right, thank you. So we would like to thank and give recognition to the mayor, to Kenyatta Johnson, councilwoman Cindy Bass, and her office, and to all the esteemed members of the council today. On behalf of our CEO, Baba Andre Noble, our Board of Trustees, and the entire staff, family, and of the STEM ambassadors, we would like to thank you for this prestigious honor. Well, when we talk about climate change, there's something that transcends, a common threat that transcends past national borders, and that's climate change. Now, the mayor, we heard her speak yesterday, and she talked about two types of people. One type of- one group of people, they articulate very well the problems. And another group of people who articulate, but also are creative geniuses that look for solutions and incorporate solutions. Well, at M. Hotepp, we have solution providers. We have cultivated a group of young people that are making a real impact in the world. When we went to Ghana this year, not only did we go and make an impact there, but we united two communities, here in Philadelphia and in Ghana, where is trash is a very big problem here. But with our resources and our intellect, our STEM ambassadors were able to collect this plastic waste, use an engineered machine that we have, convert it into monofilament, use that monofilament in a 3D printer to create water filters that cleaned and saved lives. So when we went there, last year, we went, arrived, and we had to take a canoe. But because of climate change, we had to walk the entire way because all of their water had dried up. I want you to picture that. Not only that, when we went there, the STEM ambassadors, because we conduct studies as scientists, we walked to their drinking source, which was a mile away, and the water that they were drinking looked like this phone. Through their innovation, in a matter of 30 minutes, they were able to take water that looked like this and that tested positive for E. coli castridium, and were able to provide them with clean water. Their children literally were fighting over the water because they said it tastes sweet. Not only that, we were trying to offer them candy or treats. They said, "No, no, no, we want water." Not only that, we took the 3D-printed material and made a prosthetic limb for a villager, being able to see these STEM ambassadors give somebody the ability to walk through something that is considered trash and through their innovation. So not only is our STEM program at M. Hotepp transformational, and just as this as councilwoman Cindy Bass talked about, how our city has a negative light, right, from the homicide cases, right, just like this phone? This is the dirty drinking water and the contamination of our city gets. But we have a light of clean water, right? We have a light of these STEM ambassadors that are changing the narrative of the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Council will be at ease. One second. I missed something in my notes. I'm gonna take this one. One of our young people from M. Hotepp just had a few remarks at the podium. It's always about the young people, y'all.
Hotepp family. My name is Musa Wilson. I'm a senior from the graduating class of 2024, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our STEM program. Our STEM program is not simply an after-school program or extracurricular, but it's a tool. It's a constellation of resources that our young people use to solve real-world problems in our community. Through our STEM initiatives and our code of ethics, we're able to transform extraordinary students to trailblazers and global changers, people who actually change the world. At M. Hotepp, we have a saying that's called "Tep is the standard." And I'm not saying that just to say it. I say it because it really is. Tep is the standard because we go to places like Jackson, Mississippi, and we assist in their water crisis and the things that they go through. Tep is the standard because we go to places like Savannah, Georgia, and we get the Public Health Department to shut down schools that are deemed unsafe for the school to be consuming the water and things of that nature. But most importantly, Tep is the standard because we answer every call to action, and we assist our communities when they need it most. And we just believe that that's the best thing to do, it's the right thing to do. So if you ever need help in the city of Philadelphia or anywhere globally, you know where to call Tep.
Anybody need an intern paid real quick, you know? Are you signing him up? Council will be at ease. Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. With all this positivity of young people, I'm inspired. But I want to welcome two chambers, Ms. Philadelphia, Tanisha Wilson, from a place called Simpson Street. And for those of you who don't know, a lot has happened on Simpson Street. It's my ground zero in the 4th district, but she has managed to rise above that street and represent Philadelphia as our Miss America. Can you stand and be welcomed by counsel? Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Congratulations. The next order of business is communications. The chair requests that the sergeant-at-arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication in her possession?
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on June 5th, 2024, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on May 23rd, 2024. Bill number 240012-A, 240118, 240119, 240183, 240184, 240191, 240221, 240239, 240240, 240243, 240250, 240282, 240301, 240302, 240329, 240331, 240334, and 240335. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a draft of a resolution entitled, Confirming the Appointment of Tumore Alexander as Regional Trustee for the City of Philadelphia in Connection with the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust. There are no other communications in my possession, council president.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, Philadelphia. It's a great day to be alive. There's no bills or resolutions for introduction today.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, council president. Today I offer two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please read the titles of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of Tumore Alexander as Regional Trustee for the City of Philadelphia in connection with the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the council president to initiate appeals by the City Council of Decisions of the Zoning Board of Adjustment in certain circumstances and to retain legal counsel in connection with such appeals.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardier.
Today I offer one bill, one non-privileged resolution, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you. Would the chair, would the clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing 5217 Whitby, Whitby Mount Mariah LLC or subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain an encroachment at 5217 through 5219 Whitby Avenue under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to modify the development plans previously approved by council resolutions 220757, 220823, and 230503, and memorialized in a purchase and development agreement between the Land Bank and West Noma Revitalization Group LLC, the developer to include only one renovated property located at 4041 Cambridge Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District, and to permit West Noma Revitalization Group LLC to return the properties located at 759761, 763, 773, and 783 Palace Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District to the Philadelphia Land Bank in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Gloria Twine Chizam, Ph.D., for her civic leadership and service to the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. I have one resolution.
Would the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the champion of the week, the Fairmount Water Works Freshwater Muscle Hatchery, for their research and efforts to improve water quality and aquatic life in the city of Philadelphia using lab-grown freshwater mussels.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the chamber that never sleeps, three bills and four resolutions, one of them privileged.
Would the clerk please read the title of the bills and the resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of businesses within the area bounded by 54th Street, the north side of Market Street, 63rd Street, and Lansdowne Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance requiring the Water Commissioner on behalf of the city to convert certain water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure on West Country Club Road, Mimi Circle, and East Country Club Road between Conchahocken Avenue to Conchahocken Avenue, and a portion of Lackinow Avenue from private to public infrastructure, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance formally renaming the Overbrook Park Branch Library located at 7422 Haverford Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19151, as the Robert A. Brady Library to honor the dedication and service of former United States Congressman and Chair of the Philadelphia Democratic Party, the Honorable Robert A. Brady.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution also naming West Allegheny Avenue between 25th Street and 26th Street as Thomas Cut Master Butter Muldro Way in honor of the life and legacy of WDSDAS radio personality, Thomas Cut Master Butter Muldro.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring the five 4th district recipients of the Lindback Award for distinguished teachers, Tyrese Holloway, Robert Smith, Michelle R. Shaw Carpenter, Garth Schuler, and Christina Kimmel.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Tanisia Wilson for her outstanding dedication to education, community service, and her recent crowning achievement as Miss Philadelphia 2024.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Miller Parker and formerly declaring June 18, 2024, as Miller Parker Day in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Good morning, council president, colleagues, or roommates. I have one privileged resolution for, for us today.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring June 21st, 2024, as Make Music Philly Day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Lizada.
Thank you, council president. I offer no bill and no resolutions today.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I offer my bills and resolutions, I would like to recognize the middle school track team from Gerard College who is here today. So if you all can stand up, please. They're coached by Coach Reggie Manley. The middle school track team performed very well at their conference championships about a week or so ago. Today, they actually, the varsity team actually won the conference championship. So we were introducing a resolution today, recognizing the varsity team. But today I introduce one bill, two privileged resolutions, and two non-privileged resolutions.
Would the clerk please read the title of the bills and privilege and non-privilege resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-4400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Responsible Business Operations by amending the definition of critical nuisance businesses and further clarifying an obstruction of an investigation, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution also naming Master Street between Broad Street and Carlisle Street as Erica Alexander Way.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming North College Avenue between West College Avenue and Ridge Avenue as Freedom Fighters Way.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Gerard College Varsity Boys' Track Team for winning the 2024 Metropolitan Philadelphia Athletic Association's Boys' Track Championship.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing June 2024 as Gun Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Good morning, council president. I have three privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Would the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution, joining the city of Philadelphia in National Garden Week, celebrating the role of nature in nurturing mental and physical wellness, and recognizing the urgent need for garden equity across the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution. Honoring and recognizing Mia Benetende and Mark Maisick of the Edward T. Steele School as recipients of the 2024 Lindback Award for distinguished teachers.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution, celebrating the use of school voucher programming as harmful to the school district of Philadel- oh, I'm sorry. This would be a non-privileged resolution, council president.
This resolution. Can you please read the title over? Read the title over, please.
A non-privileged resolution condemning the use of school voucher programming as harmful to the school district of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, council president. I have nodded today.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Good morning, council president. No bills or resolutions today.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Chair recognizes senior member Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you. Would the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance authorizing the installation of an all-way stop sign at the intersection of Shalfont Drive and Calera Road.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark, Mark Squello.
Easy for you to say. Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
This might be privileged. It's privileged. Authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine the sudden closing of the University of the Arts, the impact the sudden closing will have on the Philadelphia higher education system, and most importantly, the negative impacts on the current student body and staff.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two non-privileged resolutions.
Would the clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 8th Councilmatic District, including the following streets: Wakefield Street, Column Street, East Worcester Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting the mayor to return to council Bill number 240336, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Zoning and Planning, by adding definitions and creating a new Chestnut Hill Lower East NCO in the area generally bounded by the Septa Chestnut Hill East Line, Crusham Valley Drive, Germantown Avenue, Winston Road, Moreland Road, Devon Street, Ardley Street, and Springfield Avenue, under certain terms and conditions, for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for the consideration at our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, council-
Counsel will be at ease. Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, council president. I have one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution co-introducing it with Majority Leader Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Would the clerk, would the clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution calling upon the city of Philadelphia's Office of Homeless Services and its contracted service providers to collect pregnancy status data at intake.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar? Next one. Excuse me. This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing June 10th, 2024, as American Heart Association's Centennial Celebration Day in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from the committees. The chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson for a report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole reports out five bills and three resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the report?
To the Committee of the Whole, to which was referred the following bills and resolutions. Bill number 240179, entitled Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2025, and Bill number 240180, entitled Amending Chapter 9-1800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled School Tax Authorization, to provide for an increase in the tax that the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia has authorized to impose on real estate, and amending Chapter 9-1300, entitled Real Estate Taxes, to establish an equivalent reduction in the tax rate for the city real estate tax, and making technical changes all under certain conditions. And Bill number 240181, entitled To Adopt a Fiscal 2025 Capital Budget, and Bill number 240182, entitled To Adopt a Capital Program for Six Fiscal Years 2025 through 2030 Inclusive. And Bill number 240492, entitled Amending Section 19-1301.1 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Homestead Exclusion, to Increase the Amount of the Homestead Exclusion, under certain terms and conditions. And Resolution Number 240168, Appointing Madison McCarron to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And Resolution Number 240487, entitled Appointing Carrie Fiehler Bender to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. And Resolution Number 240552, entitled Appointing Brianna Wilkins to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services Districts, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, ask to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the chief clerk.
Is there a second? It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended to add to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries for Bills number 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, and 240492 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolutions number 240168, 240487, and 240552 will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out 11 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Rules, to which was referred the following bills. Bill number 240058, entitled Amending Section 14-702 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Floor Area Height and Dwelling Unit Density Bonuses, to Add Requirements Related to the Use of Payments in Lieu of Building Affordable Housing-
Building Affordable Housing to Receive Floor Area, Building Height and Dwelling Unit Density Bonuses, and amending Section 14-533 entitled Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District to Add Requirements Related to the Use of Payments in Lieu of Building Affordable Housing to Satisfy Certain Minimum Affordable Housing Building Requirements All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240157 entitled Amending Title 14 Zoning and Planning and Title 18 Commerce of the Philadelphia Code to Clarify Responsibilities of the Department of Aviation and Eliminating Provisions Related to Passenger Charges All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240242 entitled Amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by Amending Section 14-524 entitled Fourth District Overlay District to Establish Use Regulations on Medical Facilities All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240332 entitled Approving the Sixth Amendment of the Redevelopment Proposal for the American Street Industrial Corridor Urban Renewal Area being the area generally bounded by Lehigh Avenue, Burke Street, and Montgomery Avenue on the north, by Second Street and Phillips Street on the east, by Gerard Avenue, Oxford Street, and Jefferson Street on the south, and by Germantown Avenue, Sixth Street, and Third Street on the west, including the Sixth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan which provides for changes that would make it consistent with the North Philadelphia Redevelopment Area Plan and generally consistent with the most recent comprehensive plan approved by the City Plan and Commission of the City of Philadelphia, and Bill Number 240368 entitled Continuing a Neighborhood Improvement District known as the East Pashionk Avenue Business Improvement District in the area that generally includes both sides of East Pashionk Avenue from the south side of Federal Street to the east side of South Broad Street, certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of East Pashionk Avenue, both sides of South Broad Street from the north side of McKean Street to the north side of Snyder Avenue, and the west side of South Broad Street from the south side of Mifflin Street to the north side of McKean Street, Designating the East Pashionk Avenue Business District Improvement District Inc., which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as a Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for the district including a list of proposed improvements and their estimated cost, and providing for assessment fees to be levied on property owners within the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with East Pashionk Avenue Business Improvement District Inc. relating to the district, and authorizing the East Pashionk Avenue Business Improvement District to assess property owners within the district a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240385 entitled To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Snyder Avenue, Sixth Street, Cantrell Street, and Seventh Street, and Bill Number 240415 entitled To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Island Avenue, the Delaware Expressway, and Bartram Avenue, and Bill Number 240421 entitled To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Valley Avenue, Domino Lane, Ridge Avenue, Paoli Avenue, Peckham Street Extended Ridge Avenue, Hermit Street, and Henry Avenue, and To amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14-541 Ridge Avenue Neighborhoods Overlay and making other related changes all under certain conditions, and Bill Number 240426 To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Adams Avenue, Ramona Street, Wyoming Avenue, and Whittaker Avenue, and Bill Number 240427 entitled Amending Section 14-305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Nonconformities by Providing Further Provisions on Changes from Nonconforming Uses All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240466 entitled Amending Section 14-303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Hearings of the Zoning Board of Adjustment to Change the Number of Board Members Required for a Quorum or for Action Taken at a Zoning Board of Adjustment Hearing All Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair recognizes Chairwoman Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this day, this day of bills, the bills just read into the record by the chief clerk with the exception of Bill Number 240242 to be placed on next week's first reading calendar.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries and Bills Number 240058, 240157, 240332, 240368, 240385, 240415, 240421, 240426, 420427, and 420, 4, 240466 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Bill Number 240242 will be placed on the first reading calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson and chair for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Finance, to which was referred the following bills: Bill Number 240372 entitled Constituting the 20th Supplemental Ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or subseries of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the City of Philadelphia, setting forth use of the proceeds determining the sufficiency of pledged amounts available for debt service, covenating for the payment of interest and principal, authorizing the bond committee to take certain actions with regard to the terms and conditions of the airport revenue bonds or notes and related agreements in the elections under the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the director of finance to take certain actions with regard to the sale of such airport revenue bonds or notes, the investment of the proceeds thereof, and the city's continuing disclosure obligation, and specifying the applicability of sections of First Class City Revenue Bond Act and the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, and Bill Number 240373 entitled Constituing, Constituting, excuse me, the Sixth Supplemental Ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1998, the 1998 General Bond Ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, the city to sell at either public or private sale one or more series of gas works revenue bonds and gas works revenue bonds to refund such bonds, to pay the cost of certain capital projects and other project costs, and the cost of redeeming the city's gas works revenue capital project commercial paper notes, authorizing the city to amend, novate, or terminate all or any portion of any qualified swap agreement, authorizing the city to obtain credit enhancement for any series of the bonds, making certain determinations and covenants relating to the gas works revenues, and payment of interest and principal, and authorizing covenants and actions in order that the bonds shall not be arbitrage bonds under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240374 amending the 17th Supplemental Ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance Bill Number 190432 of the Council of the City of Philadelphia approved by the mayor on June 26, 2019, to authorize an increase in the aggregate principal amount of airport revenue bonds or notes to be issued under the 17th Supplemental Ordinance from $350 million to $500 million exclusive of cost of issuance including underwriter's discount, original issue discount, capitalized interest, funds of deposits to the sinking fund reserve account if necessary and similar items. Further amending said ordinance Bill Number 190432 to authorize the pledge for security and payment of some or all of the obligations, a lien and security interest in passing or facility charges to the extent available and authorizing certain other actions, and Bill Number 240375 entitled Constituting the 19th Supplemental Ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, providing for certain amendments to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240377 entitled authorizing the city treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Citizens Bank National Association for Provision of Payroll Banking Services to the city under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240378 approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2024 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia gas works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 as amended, and Bill Number 240379 entitled Amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement to Modify the Requirements for Contracts with Not-for-Profit Vendors All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240416 entitled Authorizing an Increase in the Non-Electoral Indebtedness of the City Within Pennsylvania, Within the Pennsylvania Constitutional Limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, to provide funds towards various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with the issuance of the bonds and certain other actions, and Bill Number 240417 entitled approving the fiscal year 2025 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia gas works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, and acknowledging the receipt of revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2026 through 2030 all under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240467 entitled amending Chapter 19-3500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hospital Assessments to Revise Provisions Relating to Hospital Assessments and Authorizing the Department of Public Health to Enter into Intergovernmental Agreement with the Commonwealth Department of Human Services relating to such hospital assessments all under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240470 entitled Amending Chapter 19-3200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area to Provide for Additional Extensions of Certain Benefits Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240494 entitled Authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant to File Applications to Participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to Apply for a Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant, and to File Applications with the Commonwealth to Obtain Grants Under the Act of April 12, 1956, PL 1449, Section 4, as amended, to Prevent and Eliminate Blight, authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to File Applications to Obtain Other Grants from the Commonwealth, authorizing the Director of Commerce to Use Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program, and authorizing the Director of Planning and Development, and the Director of Commerce to Enter into all understandings and assurances contained in such applications, and it takes such action to accept the grants all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Bills Numbers 240372, 240373, 240374, 240375, 240377, 240378, 240379, 240416, 240417, 240467, 240470, and 240494 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out 16 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which was referred the following bills: Bill Number 240305 entitled Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewall Cafe in the vicinity of 795 North 24th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19130, under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240380 entitled Amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by Adding a Permissible Location on South 52nd Street between Pine Street and Osage Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240382 entitled Authorizing the Installation, Ownership, and Maintenance of Various Encroachments in the Vicinity of 4432 Main Street, 4436-42 Main Street, and 4436R Main Street, Philadelphia, PA 19127, under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240384 entitled Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewall Cafe in the Vicinity of 944 North 2nd Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 240418 entitled Establishing a Parking Regulation on Addison Street between South 54th Street and South 53rd Street, Baltimore Avenue between South 43rd Street and South 44th Street, Irving Street between South 51st Street and South 50th Street, Springfield Avenue between South 51st Street and South 52nd Street, Washington Avenue between South 56th Street and South 57th Street, South 46th Street between Locust Street and Spruce Street, Pine Street between South 62nd Street and South 63rd Street, Melville Street between Spruce Street and Locust Street, South 54th Street between Greenway Avenue and Woodland Avenue, and Bill Number 240419 entitled Establishing a Parking Regulation on Irving Street between South 59th Street and South 60th Street, South 49th Street between Regent Street and Chester Avenue, South 46th Street between Lynnmore Avenue and Woodland Avenue, Walnut Street between South 61st Street and South 62nd Street, Webster Street between South 51st Street and South 52nd Street, Sansom Street between South 61st Street and South 62nd Street, Walton Street between South 49th Street and South 50th Street, Locust Street between South 59th Street and South 60th Street, Locust Street between South 49th Street and South 50th Street, and Bill Number 240420 entitled Establishing a Parking Regulation on Ellsworth Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Ruby Street between Springfield Avenue and Chester Avenue, Sansom Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Webster Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Rodman Street between South 56th Street and South 57th Street, Willow Ave. between South 53rd Street and South 54th Street, Cobb's Creek Parkway between Spruce Street and Locust Street, South 52nd Street between Chester Avenue and Springfield Avenue, and Bill Number 240424 entitled Amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by Adding a Permissible Location at the Fourth District Container Village located at 4862-70 Parkside Avenue, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania 19131. Bill Number 240434 entitled Amending Chapter 12-3400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety on Roosevelt Boulevard by Providing for the Use, Administration, and Enforcement of Automated Speed Cameras on Broad Street and Making Regular Related Technical Changes All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240469 entitled Granting Permission to University-City UROV Corporation in Order to Demarcate the Boundaries of University-City UROV District and Maintain a Clear Nylon Cord or Plastic Tubes and Other Ancillary Devices, Including a Maximum of Ten Poles Along, Over, and in Certain Public Rights of Way in City Streets, and/or to Attach Such Demarcation Facilities to Existing Facilities Owned by Other Entities Authorized by Other City Ordinances Subject to Such Owners' Consent All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, and Bill Number 240473 entitled Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewall Cafe in the Vicinity of 3743 Midville Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19129, under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240475 entitled Amending Chapter 12-900 Parking Regulations and Penalties and Chapter 12-2800 Administrative Adjudication of Parking Violations of the Philadelphia Code to Add Prohibitions and Penalties Related to Parking Certain Large Vehicles Including Boats, Motorhomes, House Coaches, House Trailers, Truck Campers, Recreational Cargo Trailers, and Recreational Trailers Under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 240493 entitled Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewall Cafe in the Vicinity of 1532 Snyder Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19145, under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240495 entitled Authorizing the Vacating of Beaumont Street from 51st Street to Its Terminus Southwestwardly Therefrom, and Bill Number 240496 entitled Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewall Cafe in the Vicinity of 6249 Catherine Street, Philadelphia, PA 19143, under certain terms and conditions, and Bill Number 240497 entitled Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewall Cafe in the Vicinity of 5013 Baltimore Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19143, under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The chair recognizes Chairman Young for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Bills Number 240305, 240380, 240382, 240384, 240418, 240419, 240420, 240424, 240434, 240469, 240473, 240475, 240493, 240495, 240496, and 240497 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a report from the Committee on License and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's next. This one, the Committee on License and Inspection reports out seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on License The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which was referred the following bills: Bill number two four zero three seven one entitled amending title four of the Philadelphia code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by amending subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to add restrictions and remedies regarding encroaching trees, under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero four one four entitled amending chapter nine dash six hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled Service and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within an area bounded by O'Gon's Avenue between Hay Street and Sheltonham Avenue, under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero four six eight entitled amending chapter nine dash six hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled Services and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within an area bounded by O'Gon's Avenue between Hayne Street and Sixty-Sixth Avenue, under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero four seven four amending chapter nine dash six hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled Services and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within an area bounded by East Allegheny Avenue, Kensington Avenue, Tarssdale Avenue, and Frankfurt Avenue, under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero four seven six entitled amending chapter nine dash six hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled Service and Other Businesses by adding a new section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within the vicinity of an area bounded by North Broad Street and North Park Avenue, between West Chu Avenue and West Tabor Avenue, and in the vicinity of Wagner Avenue between North Broad Street and Old Jork Road, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero four nine eight entitled amending chapter nine dash six hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled Service and Other Businesses by adding various locations to the section regulating the hours of operation of certain establishments and providing for penalties within those various locations, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero five hundred entitled amending title nine of the Philadelphia code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter creating requirements related to the operation and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations installed at certain commercial and residential parcels, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Driscoll for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Bills numbers two four zero three seven one, two four zero four one four, two four zero four six eight, two four zero four seven four, two four zero four seven six, two four zero four nine eight, and two four zero five zero zero will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a report from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, to which was referred the following bills: Bill number two four zero four two nine entitled authorizing the Procurement Commissioner and the Chief Executive Officer of the Department of Aviation on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a concession agreement for the development, operation, and maintenance of an airport advertising program at Philadelphia International Airport, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number two four zero four three three entitled authorizing the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into a lease and concession agreement with Arrow Center Northeast Philadelphia LLC in connection with certain property at Northeast Philadelphia Airport to facilitate the development and operation of a new fixed base operator, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Driscoll for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Bills number two four zero four two nine and two four zero four three three will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere for a report from the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless, to which was referred Bill number two four zero zero one eight entitled amending title nine of the Philadelphia code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by providing for the licensing of persons responsible for performing tenant evictions at residential properties, under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. And bill number two four zero zero one eight will be placed on the first reading calendar for today. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of special business at this time. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The Chair again recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding a resolution introduced today to recall Bill number two four zero three three six. Will the Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A resolution requesting the mayor to return to council Bill number two four zero three three six entitled in ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia code entitled zoning and planning by adding definitions and creating a new Chestnut Hill Lower East NCO in the area generally bounded by the Septa Chestnut Hill East Line, Crescent Valley Drive, Germantown Avenue, Winston Road, Moreland Avenue, Devon Street, Ardley Street, and Springfield Avenue, under certain terms and conditions for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules of council to allow consideration of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the resolution at this time. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The Chair again recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Will the Chief Clerk please read a letter from the mayor?
To the President and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia, I am returning here with, as requested by your resolution adopted today, Bill number two four zero three three six entitled in ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia code entitled zoning and planning by adding definitions and creating a new Chestnut Hill Lower East NCO in the area generally bounded by the Septa Chestnut Hill East Line, Crescent Valley Drive, Germantown Avenue, Winston Road, Moreland Avenue, Devon Street, Ardley Street, and Springfield Avenue, under certain terms and conditions for the purpose of reconsideration by council of the vote by which said bill passed council.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion that council reconsider the vote by which Bill number two four zero three three six was passed.
So moved, Mr. President.
All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the motion carries and the vote by which Bill number two four zero three three six was passed has been reconsidered and the bill will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the committees with the suspension of rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two four zero zero six eight, two four zero five three four, two four zero five four five, two four zero five four six, two four zero five four seven, two four zero five four nine, two four zero five five zero, two four zero five five one, two four zero zero five nine, two four zero zero six one, two four zero three seven zero, two four zero four two eight, two four zero two eight zero, two four zero three three zero, two four zero four seven two, and two four zero zero six zero. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: two four zero five three four, two four zero five three six, two four zero five three seven, two four zero five three eight, two four zero five three nine, two four zero five four zero, two four zero five four one, and two four zero three seven six.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Due to our volume today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I want to ask, as we move forward during the public comment session and the rest of the time of today's council session, if you have comments, whether you're in the chambers or in the balcony, please take your conversations outside the chambers. Thank you very much. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Stephen Sebastianelli. He has the microphone? Okay.
Thank you so much. I wanted to thank everyone for letting me speak today, this public comment. I also wanted to express my appreciation for the council's efforts to strengthen and protect against housing for discrimination. I also wanted to say how warm I felt when reading over the bill, how it talked about disability right alongside every other discrimination. That really means a lot. But, I'm sorry, I just want to mention I have a document for anyone in council to follow along with because I know I'm hard to understand sometimes. So, yes, I wanted to comment on the challenge of inaccessibility is discrimination. I know it's not usually thought about that way. Is it, hello? Hello? Is it cutting in now? Am I good? Okay. Inaccessibility is discrimination, even though we don't always think about it that way. We often think, what sort of expense or financial deficit will it be caused to accommodate and make sure this discrimination is not upheld? And I feel like with every other listing indiscrimination, that would not be a consideration we would ever make. I understand there's challenges, but I want you to take away from this public comment the idea that inaccessibility is discrimination. I want to highlight...hello, is it good? Hello? Okay. Sorry, it keeps cutting out, I think. I want to highlight the unique challenges that people face who are individuals with physical, severe physical disabilities, like myself, in finding suitable housing. People with disabilities are often stuck in poverty due to financial limits set up by the government to maintain government benefits. These limits are quite stringent, very limiting, even down to saying that you cannot earn a certain amount or save over two thousand dollars. And it's really not a sustainable way of living. I want to talk about world-wide accessibility and what that means. It means first-floor access or reliable elevators, open floor plan, doorway design, specific location for toilets next to the shower to make sure a shower chair can slide over. There's these considerations and even more proximity to public transportation for medical appointments and other essential services, safety of area and parking for nurses to continue receiving services. And if they're not safe, you don't have nurses. If you don't have nurses, there's no way to live in my situation. They need additional rooms because of medical storage equipment and also the potential of a living aid. You're not able to have a roommate, which is the standard solution for most people who are low income, where you just get a roommate and then split the costs. However, trying to find someone in a situation where they have a three or four-bedroom apartment that they want to take only one bedroom of, but then pay the difference that I cannot afford, it just is not an available option. And even if it was, I wouldn't be allowed to do that because it would count as a gift. Now, all these considerations put housing costs somewhere between two thousand to four thousand dollars a month for suitable housing, and that would be around ninety thousand dollars a year that you need to earn to be able to afford housing if it was not based on income-based housing programs. Below you'll see a couple sections, section nine one zero eight M, which previously refusing or restraining housing...sorry, refusing or restricting housing accommodations based on tenant's source of income. And I think this could expand to include eligibility discrimination based on disability-related accommodations and extenuating circumstances, things like additional rooms for medical storage and living aids, servicing animals, emotional support animals, insulation, necessary accessibility features, not allowing tenants to go to college while they're living in low-income housing. Yes, that is the thing. Imposing additional fees or deposits on tenants because of their disabilities and the additional accommodations that they need to live there. And you can see in the next page, I gave a possible way of working the inclusion. Please look at that over at your leisure. Next is section nine one one zero eight I, which prohibits false information...false or misleading information about the property's availability or eligibility based on tenant's source of income. I think that could also be expanded to include elements of disability, talking about their false advertisement of accessibility, advertisement on accessibility sites, even though you investigate and they say it's accessible if you can go up two flights of stairs to get into the place. I've actually been told that before. Or people saying that they do not use low-income housing tax credit programs or other flexible low-income programs, even though their advertiser's doing so and they're on the list for such. And people ask, why is this not just on ADA regulation? Why is this something that we should talk about in these bills? Well, first, kind of funny, I was told I had to relate it directly to the bills that we're talking about and the amendments, so there we go. However, there's a concept of redundancy equals validity and irrefutability. The concept that when people are looking for laws and things that have to be upheld... and things that have to be upheld, they look for repeated wording, they look for repeated concepts. And if it's only in one location, it can often be overlooked or completely disregarded. And I think it's an important topic that we should discuss. Nor is there really a better place to bring it up. Perhaps this discussion could lead to more after reforms somewhere in a specific place, specifically talking about disability and the way we can include it into all legislation. I wanted to just really quick go into my personal story and ask for any help or any understanding that could be presented. I'm living in a low-income housing tax credit property. I've been there for ten years. I moved in because I was dating someone who worked at Liberty Resources, and they were able to get me in as it was being built. I'm not sure if that's allowed to happen technically, but it did. And thank goodness, because I would have nowhere else to live otherwise. Now, it was really great for a little bit under a year until it started flooding with raw sewage every four months for several years. It was horrible. I had to keep going into hotels, spending upwards of two years in hotels over the past ten years as I was working on trying to fix the issue, trying to involve congresspeople, trying to involve license inspections, water department, PHFA. And over this time, with these constant floodings, I suspected that mold was growing. And I was denied that information by the apartment complex because there's nothing that legally says they have to tell you. So, this information was withheld or just not revealed to me, and they didn't have the information, supposedly. However, this presence of mold started causing a lot of problems. Increases in anxiety and stress, having to move back and forth and dealing with landlords that wanted to push down your opinions, push down your emotions. They wanted to make it so their legal department would make you stop talking to different people, being open about the challenges they're experiencing, asking for help on different social media sites. And on top of all that, on top of that abusive practice, which I would call it abusive practice, they didn't understand that I was getting worse and worse symptoms every day that I live at this apartment, that I'm still at, mind you. Symptoms as severe as severe migraines, gastrointestinal issues, weight loss, worsening respiratory conditions, which is very bad for someone who's already, you know, very susceptible and compromised respiratorally. Diabetes, like symptoms appearing, which was stopping me from getting my nutritional suffering, causing the weight loss. Mind fog, greater weakness on top of my already progressive disability, but at a much more increased rate. Chronic fatigue, brain aneurysm developing. Chronic fatigue, taking seventeen-plus hours a day sleeping to function. This just was not okay. And I tried for seven years to find somewhere else to live. I found nothing but long waiting lists, things that they claim only are three to fifteen years, but were actually cost a lifetime because people did not want to move out. There's a couple more things that I'd like to mention. However, I'm just going to say, please, if anyone on the council would like to hear more information as they read more details, please reach out to me. My phone contact, my email are there. Come talk to me afterwards. I appreciate any help and I appreciate any more thoughts regarding the situation and accessibility. Thank you.
Tanya McClary. May Kate Perez, Jordan Yarborough, and Glenn Bryan also make their way to the podium. Tanya McClary. Kate Perez.
Hello. Okay. My name's Kate Perez. The ceasefire petition I emailed all of you is now at three hundred and forty-six signatures that all agree that Philadelphia is complicit in genocide. I have thirty-four handwritten letters gathered at a vigil where we mourn the loss of more than 45,000 human beings, more than 80,000 maimed, and more than 25,000 children orphaned. Actual death tolls are unknown as Israel has systematically wiped out journalists, cut off an entire country's Wi-Fi, and decimated eighty percent of civilian infrastructure. On 240280, I don't have faith in our Philadelphia Police Department to appropriately handle hate crimes. It's a conflict of interest as our own officers are cross-trained by the well-documented racist apartheid state of Israel that's already been taken to international court on charges of ethnic cleansing, collective punishment, forced starvation, and more. During the bill's public meeting, the PPD representative couldn't even produce Philadelphia's hate crime statistics when asked. As a citizen, it feels like it's either a lack of competence or they're hiding the numbers. By Israel indiscriminately killing Palestinians and then increasing our state war bonds, we are the ones who are encouraging hate crimes. By staying silent, you are telling the Zionists back home that it's okay to stab a six-year-old to death if they're Palestinian. By saying nothing, you are empowering Zionists to show up in the middle of the night at the Swarthmore encampment and shoot fireworks into the tents. Council members say a ceasefire resolution would be performative, but pass resolutions every week begging Biden to fund our social services and honor a middle school class. By doing this, we're ignoring the fact that Israel has killed so many children that Gaza had to cancel the 2024 school year, and then they used all of our social security money to buy the bombs to drop on the schools. Just yesterday, they murdered over a hundred people sheltering in a school in the Nazirik refugee camp. More than 15,000 children have already been murdered, and all of them were ours. You can't condemn Hamas for killing 1,200 people and then vote on street names while trading cops and selling weapons to the occupation that's burning Palestinians alive right now. A ceasefire is the bare minimum. We're supposed to cut all ties with Israel, stop selling them weapons, stop funding war crimes, and free Palestine.
Is Tanya McClary here? Okay, Jordan Yarborough, Glenn Bryan, Elise Spets, and then Stephanie Renee also make their way to the podium?
Good morning, members of council. My name is Reverend Tanya McClary, and I am the executive director of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Many people know us as CPOC, as well as the newly-appointed pastor of Calvary AME Church right here in the city of Philadelphia. I am here today to enthusiastically support the proposed amendment to CPOC's ordinance. We are grateful to Councilmember Jones for all his support to our agency and for his leadership in this process. Like any fledgling agency, the necessity of process changes becomes apparent as experience is gained. And while this is the first adjustment to our founding legislation, it probably won't be the last. This amendment modifies the removal mechanism for CPOC's Board of Commissioners, allowing the commission to address serious misconduct issues that should they arise. Secondly, the amendment provides important clarification of the terms and the ordinance. These changes will help our young agency to continue to grow and fulfill the important duties that we are tasked with. The ordinance's existing removal mechanism applies only to situations where a member of the commission is being removed for cause. This means misconduct, inability or failure to perform required duties or ethical violations. The ordinance also requires that any person being removed have due process protections, including notice and the opportunity to be heard at a hearing. All of these important provisions remain the same. And under the existing process, only city council can remove a member of the commission, employing a process that can be time-consuming and difficult to navigate, given the magnitude and the scope and the volume of city council's responsibilities. This amendment creates an interim step that allows the Board of Commissioners to address serious misconduct by voting to remove a member where necessary with the same due process protections. Furthermore, the removal will not be finalized until you all, city council, has had the opportunity to vote to supersede the removal. The suspension mechanism simply allows time to complete this thorough investigation into the alleged misconduct or allow time for city council to review board removal. Suspension allows the commission to protect confidential information during that process. In addition, the amendment clarifies the definitions, which include the Board of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission and the Department, meaning the Philadelphia Police Department. Thank you for your time and attention, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Jordan Yarborough.
Give me a second. All right, give me a second. I'm on my phone. I came to-- my fault. I came here to talk about five different bills and resolutions because I thought that-- I came here to talk about five different bills and resolutions because I thought that we was going to have two minutes apiece to talk about every joint. I thought you'd get up, sit back down, get up, sit back down. I never did one of these before. But-- Y'all can hear me? I came here to talk about five different bills and resolutions. But when I realized that you get two minutes to go through everything that you have, I don't think I'm going to be able to talk about all five different bills and resolutions when it comes to two minutes apiece. So, yeah, I'm Jordan Yarborough. I'm trying to be a young politician. I'm at CCP for liberal studies. If anybody-- I made contact with a bunch of you before we came here today. I would love a minute of your time to talk about bills and resolutions after we get out of here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Glenn Bryan, then Elise Spets, Stephanie Renee, and Mark Masick.
Hi. Hi, good morning. And my name is Glenn Bryan, and I'm the Assistant Vice President of the University of Pennsylvania's Office of Government and Community Affairs. First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Gaudier and the members of city council for bringing forth a resolution to recognize and celebrate the remarkable achievements of Dr. Gloria Twine Chisholm. Dr. Chisholm's academic pursuits led her to the University of Pennsylvania, where she earned her PhD in 1960. This marked the beginning of a storied career characterized by pioneering research and an enduring commitment to public service. Dr. Chisholm's work in psychology and aerospace technology earned her numerous awards, including the George Washington Carver Scientific Achievement Award, the Alumni Award of Merit from the University of Pennsylvania. It was her love for Penn where Dr. Chisholm became the first African-American woman to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees that I'm especially proud to speak about today. Her leadership roles within the university included chairing the Boards of Advisors for the School of Social Policy and Practice and the Graduate School of Education. Her and her late husband, who I knew very well, generous-- gave generous support, spanned multiple schools and initiatives at Penn, helping to shape Penn into this institution that it is today. Dr. Chisholm's dedication extended beyond Penn and into the heart of Philadelphia through her leadership and involvement with the Free Library, William Penn Foundation, the Pew Charitable Trust, the American Psychological Association, and many, many more. In celebrating Dr. Gloria Twine Chisholm, we honor not only her professional achievements, but also her profound impact on our community and city. May her legacy of service and dedication inspire us all. Thank you for the opportunity.
Elise Spets.
Good morning. I am Elise Spets. I'm the Senior Executive Director of Alumni Relations at Penn. I'd like to thank Councilmember Gaudier and the members of city council for your service to our community and for today recognizing the extraordinary accomplishments of Dr. Gloria Twine Chisholm. I have had the honor of knowing and working with Dr. Chisholm for twenty-four years and her beloved Jack until he passed away. The Doctors-Chisholm were everywhere at Penn. Paging through Penn photo albums, I found dozens of pictures of the Chisholms at events, at board meetings, literally everywhere. In Dr. Chisholm's fifty years of service as a trustee at Penn, she has done more in support of students, alumni, faculty, and staff of color than any of our 300,000 living alumni. In 1993, Dr. Chisholm founded what was then called the Committee on Minority Permanence at Penn and is now the James Bristor Society. These alumni leaders, by power of their example, support and promote Penn's efforts to attract, encourage, and maintain a culturally diverse community of faculty, students, administrators, staff, and volunteers, enriching the university as a whole. Penn now has Black and Brown leaders on every single one of our boards where decisions are made. Penn students see themselves in our leaders. Dana Richie Troy, who's sitting right over there, who is a Penn alum, JBS member and staff member, said, "Having someone so accomplished extend themselves to you when you don't yet know your potential was truly impactful." She invited us to think bigger, reach farther, and be confident in ourselves and our right to share our talents. Michael Barrett, Penn trustee, Penn alumni president, and James Bristor Society Chair, said, "Dr. Chisholm is a history maker. Every chair of the Bristor Society has sought her guidance and leadership over the years. She is our guiding light. Every trustee of color owes Dr. Chisholm a huge thank you for creating the opportunities for us to follow her lead, and we are grateful to stand on her strong and broad shoulders. We are honored to have her as our true North Star." That's Dr. Chisholm telling me to finish up. Our North Star, Penn's North Star. Dr. Gloria Chisholm, you are our beacon. Thank you, and thank you, City of Philadelphia.
Stephanie Renee.
Good morning. I'm not a native Philadelphian, but just like John Coltrane, Nina Simone, and countless other wonderful legends in music, I came here to lay some roots and grow professionally. And I volunteered to lead Make Music Day Philly 2024 as a way to give back to the city that's given me so much and developed me as a professional. I want to thank Councilmember Landau, her staff, Cheryl Carson, and the good folks at Smith Memorial Playground for responding enthusiastically to our call to make one day in Philadelphia all about free musical performance everywhere. But I have to let you know that there are some large institutions in this city who receive millions of dollars in endowments and grant monies who were, at best, indifferent or just said that they would not provide staffing, the funding for staffing, for a few hours to have musical performances at their venues. So today, I'd like to challenge Philadelphia City Council, Mayor Parker's administration, those institutions and others throughout the city to sign up, to be all in. If we're the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection with such an indelible musical legacy, then we need more people to step up for one day. June 21st is what we ask annually to join 1,200 other global cities and locations to celebrate live music and to uplift homegrown talent. And so I hope you all will seek me out if you're interested in joining the effort this year or moving forward in the future. Thank you.
Mark Masick. Mark Masick, Madonna Sealdes, Queen Judith Robinson, and Kathy Kaufman also make their way to the podium.
Hi, I'm Mark Masick. I won the Lindback Award for distinguished teaching with my colleague Mia Benatende, who's over here. I teach at Edward Steele Elementary School up in Nice Town, and when I told my students I was gonna come here to address the council, I said, "What should I say?" And they said, "Please tell everyone that we don't like the food in the school." And I said, "Okay, how about something good?" And one of my students rose her hand and says, "Say you have the best bilingual student in the whole city," and I do, and her name is Zori Feliz Diaz, and you guys will meet her eventually on her way up, I'm sure. And then another kid said, "Please tell them that we don't like the food in the school." I said, "Okay, but how about something good?" They said, "Tell them about us, tell them about our homeroom." And this is my homeroom in Nice Town, where they came and they filmed our class as the way to train all the other classes to show what reading should be like. And I said, "I'll tell them about that, I'll tell them about you guys, the nice kids from Nice Town." And then they said, "Okay, but please tell them we don't like the food in the school." And I said, "Okay." And then one girl, she threw her hands up, she said, "I knew this was gonna happen. You're gonna become too famous and you're gonna leave us for a good school." And I said, "This is a good school, and why would I leave here? Steele is my home." And the thing is, good teaching doesn't happen in a vacuum. We have great teachers, we have great students, we have it all, but we can't do it without support from City Council, from all the people, because we do have these wonderful students and teachers in Nice Town at Steele, and I just wanted to have the opportunity to address you. Thank you guys so much.
Donna Sealdes, then Queen Judith Robinson, Kathy Kaufman, and Jeremy Blattstein.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Donna J. Fields. I currently live in southwest Philadelphia in Council President Johnson's district. Council President Johnson, I want to thank you sincerely for responding to my neighborhood's needs and helping us repave our driveways. I'm here to testify on Bill 240370, which renames the West Oak Lane Library the Dwight Evans Library. I'm glad City Council is honoring Representative Evans' work in education, and I hope council members consider carrying on his work by increasing the share of property taxes going to the school district to 60%. I am a registered nurse in the Philadelphia School District, and I serve nearly 800 students. My colleagues and I are constantly enduring hardships of numerous students experiencing the loss of parents, homelessness, assaults, abuse, depression, isolation, anxiety, unworthiness, and identity crisis. As staff members required to complete state mandated benchmarks, we do not possess the bandwidth to support these students through the traumatic experiences which consume them and inhibit their ability to thrive academically. I graduated from the school district of Philadelphia, and I have experienced massive detrimental effects due to the lack of educational and recreational resources that resulted from chronic cuts and underfunding. Although I overcame those challenges, it took finding organizations who poured into me as an adult what I was lacking throughout my childhood. We must remain diligent and mindful of the historical austerities which have yet to provide equality throughout our city, the family dichotomy which was born from ancestral trauma. We have to be fully vested in seeing Philly students succeed no matter what they've been through. Only then will we see true brotherly love. We can't not fund the district and expect the student experiences will be better than what I experienced. The school district must have enough resources and staff to help our children. We need more compassionate counselors, productive social workers, caring nurses, and partner organizations who hold the interest of our students' passionate beliefs and pursuits. We will not see the change necessary for the betterment of our society unless we invest in our schools. Please increase the share of property taxes going to Philadelphia schools to 60% where it used to be. Thank you.
Queen Judith Robinson, then Kathy Kaufman, Jeremy Blattstein, and Rebecca Jean Murphy.
Yes, good morning. Queen Judith Robinson here. Hold on. According to the Philadelphia Gay News survey says racism, yes, deep-seated racism. Institutional racism is the number-one area of discrimination in America and right here in Philadelphia. Number-one area of discrimination. Regarding the zoning board, trying to hit all these areas, major conflict coming our way. We can't have this recusing and moving back and forth after deals have been crafted. We have a $32 million police facility that's being bullied down our throat in North Philadelphia, where gentrification is in the midst, okay? And people are coming onboard to rubber stamp. We are challenging it now, saying, "Hell, no." We want you to know that we have five different police forces overpolicing us in North Philly, and we still have murder and mayhem. So we need to clarify what's going on with our police department as it relates to $32 million, and our rec centers and our libraries are in need of repairs. We're getting painted on the outside, and we have no repairs inside. Legacy of former Council President Darrell Clark, shame on the mess. Housing trust, if we don't rein in PHA and these willing and dealing going on, housing trust is not worthy of trust. Firearms, yes, I agree. 87%, am I correct, of the crimes were committed in our great city with these illegal, unserialized firearms? So whatever we could do to call the ATF in, when we asking the president for something, remember, no permanent enemies, no permanent friends, just permanent agenda, Black people. Ask for something that can help us in our community. Thank you very much for the time.
Kathy Kaufman?
Good morning. Can you all hear me? My name is Kathy Kaufman. I live at Broad and Pine in District 2, Council President Johnson's district, and I'm here on behalf of Bill 240370, which renames the West Oak Lane Library the Dwight Evans Library in honor of Representative Evans' support of education. I'm urging City Council to continue his legacy by strengthening educational opportunities in Philadelphia. Please expand Philadelphia pre-K by 250 seats and increase the millage rate going to the district to 60%. I lived and worked in Lower Marion School District for 25 years. My children attended Lower Marion Public Schools and had all the resources and services they needed at their fingertips, both academic and enrichment. Since retiring in 2022, I serve on the Boards of First Up, which is a nonprofit committed to early childhood education, and Reading Allowed, a literacy nonprofit that provides specialized reading instruction to underserved students in Philadelphia. For the past three years, Reading Allowed has worked with General Meade Elementary. The difference between the school in Lower Marion where I taught and Meade Elementary is striking. Meade has crowded classes, and the academic and emotional needs of the kids are profound without the resources to adequately address them. The principal and staff at Meade are deeply committed to their students, and they do the best they can. But I'm sad to say that if Reading Allowed did not get the private funding to work at Meade, the children there would not have received the interventions they need to even begin to advance their reading proficiency. You have a handout called Now Is the Time, which indicates that 58% of students across the city and in your districts are failing the reading PSSA. Without supports like pre-K and adequate school funding, reading scores will not improve. Right now, just over half of Philadelphia adults are functionally illiterate, and nearly two-thirds are low-literate. If Philadelphia is to become a city that people want to move to, to pay taxes to, to raise children in, then we need to start investing in education. That's why I'm asking City Council to expand Philadelphia pre-K by 250 seats and to increase the millage rate going to the school district to 60%. Pre-K provides a strong academic start, and school funding will ensure that these students will not continue their journeys underfunded, understaffed, and under-resourced. To quote Mayor Parker, "We're not interested in speeches, we're watching what you do." Our students deserve the same prospects as the students in districts like Lower Marion. Thank you.
Kim Rebecca Jean Murphy, Connor Hogan, and Jake Zychak, please also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. 10 minutes late, but we'll let it slide. I'm Jeremy Blattstein, and I'm talking in support of Resolution 240545, introduced by Councilmember Lando. Resolution declaring the City of Philadelphia's commitment to protect the rights and equal protections of all LGBTQ+ Philadelphians in light of the recent increase in attempts to restrict the rights of transgender people. It's really amazing thing, and I just really want to acknowledge Councilmember Lando for being the first openly member of the LGBTQ+ community and the impact that she has been doing for the community to really fight for their rights and really have their voice. I also want to just do a quick mention of Stonewall for those people who aren't aware of that. It's a sports league for people in the community. I've participated as an ally, and I really think that it's something that really brings new people to the City of Philadelphia together, and I encourage you to pass that along to your constituents. And the last point that I would like to make is in regards to the increase on the homestead exemption that is going up by $20,000, and really what is the impact that that is going to have on the Philadelphia school district? By my estimate, it's probably $10 million a year, and over 10 years, that's $100 million. So similarly what people are talking about today, what are we doing to either replace that income or really look at that? Because that's something that we just took another $250 million from the school district over 10 years, and that has been something that just got put in that I don't believe really is gonna have any discussion over the next two weeks. But I appreciate that, and I hope we'll be on time next week. Thank you.
Rebecca Jean Murphy, Connor Hogan, Jake Zychak, and Anthony McNeil.
Good morning, I'm Jean Murphy. Thank you to everyone in this room for your service to Philadelphia. I am the manager for the Annual Fund in Leadership Giving at University of the Arts. I'm also a member of the UARTS Staff Union with United Academics of Philadelphia. Like many of my colleagues, I heard about UARTS closure through the Inquirer article published in the evening of May 31st. Former President Kerry Wach and the Board of Trustees did not send us official communication until an hour and a half later, and this lack of transparent and prompt communication with our community has become the embarrassing precedent in the wake of the closure announcement. Faculty, staff, and students have been showing up to campus so we can pick up the pieces left after this catastrophe and support one another. Where are our leaders, though? In addition to our leaders not being on campus this week, we have also not heard definitive answers about what is expected of us in this closure. I do not know the details of my pay, my benefits, or even my employment status. I am speaking here in support of the resolution to investigate the unprecedented and heartbreaking closure of UARTS so we can hold the Board of Trustees and all responsible parties accountable. I've worked at UARTS for less than two years, but in my time, I have felt the importance of this institution in the Philadelphia community. For it to be gutted without notice will be felt for years to come. On the same day former President Wach resigned, the university canceled impact negotiation with the faculty and staff unions and have yet to give us a new date. Yesterday, June 5th, our union filed an unfair labor practice charge in response to the cancellation. Again, I'm here to vocalize my support of the resolution by Councilmember Squilla to investigate the UARTS closure, not only so this community can get much-needed answers, but also to prevent this situation from happening in other communities. UARTS leaders have failed our students, faculty, staff, and the entire UARTS, the entire Philadelphia arts and culture community. As leaders of the city, I'm asking you to not fail us as they have, to get answers to why this is happening, and to help us. Thank you for your time, and thank you for solidarity.
Connor Hogan, Jake Zychak, Anthony McNeil, and then Lynn Landis.
Good afternoon, my name is Connor Hogan, and I am an Associate Adjunct Professor at the University of the Arts. I'm also a member of the UARTS Faculty Union. I'm here to speak in support of Councilmember Squilla's resolution to hold a hearing in the closure of UARTS. Last Friday evening, I read about the UARTS closure from an article in the Philly Inquirer, like my fellow faculty, staff, and over 1,300 undergraduate students. We learned from the media that on June 6th, one week later, our school's doors were closed. Email communications from President Kerry Wach and the Board of Trustees sent over the weekend offered no clear answers. On June 4th, a town hall that promised information on this closure was canceled 10 minutes before its scheduled time. The United Academics of Philadelphia, the union which I am a proud member of, has been trying to get negotiations scheduled on this unheard-of closure and its impact on our union members. I moved to Philadelphia in 2017 to attain a master's degree at the UARTS. In 2023, I had the great honor to teach these brilliant students who are now left stranded. UARTS is more than just my livelihood, it's my community here in Philly, and its absence we felt throughout the whole city. My story is just one of many. With this closure, faculty, staff, and students have found a frustrating and enraging end to this institution that has been a vital part of the artistic ecosystem of Philadelphia. The least we can get from this loss is answers. On Tuesday, the Board of Trustees canceled our impact negotiations again on short notice. As of today, we have no detailed information on pay, employment status, or benefits. Students have yet to receive any information on a teach-out plan. Staff have received no directives and yet still come in every day to get their jobs done. Former President Wach and the Board have offered nothing but useless sentimental messages and canceled meetings. We need answers, we need transparency, we need City Council to hold the Board of Trustees accountable for this closure and its impact on the community. I ask that you please support the resolution to hold a hearing on this closure. Thank you.
Jake Zychak, then Anthony McNeil, and Lynn Landis.
Hello, my name is Jacob Zychak. I am with the American Heart Association, and thank you so much for having me today. First off, I would like to wish everyone a Happy Pride Month this month. And then second off, I'd like to thank Councilmember Ahmad and the entire City Council for honoring June 10th, 2024, as a centennial celebration of the American Heart Association. The American Heart Association was founded on June 1924, and since its inception, deaths have been cut in half by cardiovascular disease. The American Heart Association has awarded over $5.7 billion in cardiovascular medical research, making us only second to the United States government. But I really want to talk about the local impact that the American Heart Association has had in Philadelphia. We've trained nearly 60,000 individuals in lifesaving hands-only CPR, including 25,000 from CPR kiosks strategically located all throughout the city, at centers like Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church. Just in 2023, we rewarded $20 million in research grants to institutions based in the City of Philadelphia, and we continue to partner with the School District of Philadelphia in the city to improve nutrition standards in schools, early childhood education and procurement. We've also worked with the school district to improve standards around water access in schools and look to work more towards physical activity. So once again, I would like to thank Councilmember Ahmad and the entire City Council for recognizing June 10th, 2024, as a centennial celebration of the American Heart Association, and really look forward to working with you all in the next year to address cardiovascular health and stroke. Just to recall, heart disease is still the leading cause of death in the City of Philadelphia, so we have a lot of work to do in the next upcoming years. But thank you so much for your time, and have a great rest of the day.
Anthony McNeil, Lynn Landis, then William Hendricks, and Obona Haggins.
Good afternoon, my name is Lynn Landis, founder of SensicalSociety.org. Regarding Resolution 240545, where Philadelphia City Council is protesting restrictions on the rights of transgender people, many others, however, are asking, "What about the rights of girls and women to participate in female sports and not to be threatened by biological males who want to compete as female, but who are stronger by nature and who are breaking records in women's sports as we speak? What about girls and women's rights to privacy from males and vice versa in locker rooms, showers, restrooms, sororities, fraternities, and even prisons? What about the rights of women to college scholarships, jobs, contracts, and other benefits? What about parents' rights over their minor children who may be considering transitioning? Already, Philadelphia allows children over 11 years old to get certain vaccines without their parents' knowledge or consent. Will children be able to make medical decisions about transitioning as well? What about books and public libraries that may contain pornographic sections and explicit drag performance? drag performances that may be inappropriate for children? Are we supposed to say all of this is okay? The public appears to be more than willing to accommodate transgender people in their own separate category in things such as sports, but many do not support violating the rights of males, females, and parents in the process. There are common sense solutions to these issues, but this resolution is only looking at this controversy through the transgender lens. Lastly, we should also be focused on another extremely important and related issue, and that is overexposure to female hormones, otherwise known as estrogen-mimicking hormones, that have a harmful effect on sexual development in all life forms. Overexposure to female hormones comes from fossil fuels, medications, and the foods we eat, and this is an issue that corporate America does not want us to look at. But it is an issue, as with all controversies, that deserves our attention and to be publicly considered from all angles, something this resolution does not do. Thank you very much.
William Hendricks.
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. See you smiling over there. Usually when I come here as a motivational speaker, formerly of WDAS, I worked with Joe Butterball-Tanborough for more than 22 years. I don't know what I'm gonna say, because God takes over my body and my heart starts beating fast. I need to step back and let God speak to all you ladies and gentlemen. And his message is, look at each other and smile and be kind. That's our purpose here on Earth. Your name, here's your purpose. It's why you're here. Your ancestors are here all throughout this building, looking down on all of you. And the message is, be the best public servant. Let me repeat that. God's talking to you. The message is, be the best public servant on the planet Earth. I made it on a few notes here, but God canceled them because it's more important that we as human beings, residents of the planet Earth, we're residents. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, man, woman, child, whoever.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
How you doing, sir? Just tell me a little bit about Michael Johns and the zoning board.
Oh, I apologize.
Slow bit.
God did that, not me.
Sorry. I appreciate, I appreciate the message.
Hold it, but let me say this. I approved. It's approved, and I'm out.
My man.
Until we meet again. I can't drop the mic.
Thank you.
Obona Haggins.
Great morning, everyone. My name is Obona Haggins. I'm a fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor, and I'm the unseated council president. I've been coming before City Council urging this body to adopt my structural racism bill 2024, and for some reason, my bill is being ignored. I've had attorneys and college professors read the bill and found it doable, and yet, for some reason, I can't get this body to read it. This is why I say we need a different type of redevelopment in this city.
Mr. Haggins, how you doing today, sir?
I'm talking about the redevelopment, brother.
Yeah, tell me a little bit about redevelopment, my brother.
I'm talking about right here, the redevelopment and urban renewal of portions of the new Kensington. You're messing up my flow, council president, so I'm going to have to request more time. Now, I know why. I know what's up with this city here. It's the gross domestic product of Philadelphia. It's the measure of market value and the final goods and services produced within the county of Philadelphia. In 2022, it was $120 million. It pains me to say this, but the public has the right to know. The City of Philadelphia cannot economically afford losing the domestic product of American freedmen going to prison from its overall market value, which means this city has no political intention of eradicating gun violence. Philadelphia must maintain gun violence. They must maintain this to keep the economy going. Without American freedmen going to prison, this city will be economically bankrupt. So what I'm calling for is this. What we have here in the city, fiscally functioning without violating our 13th Amendment, this city cannot function without violating the 13th Amendment rights of American freedmen. So that being the case, I ask all residents in this city, the ACLU, and the clergy to call for placing the City of Philadelphia in federal receivership for breach of contract, breach of duty, security fraud, and repudiation of the 13th Amendment. The roadmap to safer communities, the researchers wasn't wrong. This city is structurally racist to the core, and no matter what kind of programs you have, gun violence is never going to end in this city because you guys are violating the American Freedman's 13th Amendment constitutional rights.
Council President, there are no other names for public comment.
Nadira, what are we doing? Okay. This concludes the public comment for today. No, thank you for being here with us. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading, second reading and final patches calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240068?
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter further providing for mandatory annual appropriations for the Housing Trust Fund and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240068.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Gaudier, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240068 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240534?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to 1234-1240 South 47th Street, 3914, 3935, 3936, and 3938 Folsom Street, located in the 3rd Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240534.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Gaudier, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240534 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240545?
A resolution declaring the City of Philadelphia's commitment to protect the rights and equal protections of all LGBTQ+ Philadelphians in light of the recent increase in attempts to restrict the rights of transgender people.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240545.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Gaudier, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240545 be-
Pardon me, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Lando, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240545 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240546?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2839 North Oriana Street located in the 7th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240546.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240546 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240547?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deed conveying title to 2035 East Birch Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240547.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240547 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240549?
A resolution approving the appointment of Richard Harris to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240549.
Move for the adoption of resolution?
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240549 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240550?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deed conveying title to 1900 East Lehigh Avenue, located in the 1st Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240550.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240550 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240551?
A resolution approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the New Kensington-Fishtown Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 2451 through 2453 Frankfurt Avenue, and authorizing the Redevelopment Authority to execute the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement with BMK Properties LLC and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240551.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240551 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240059?
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finances, Taxes, and Collections by adding a new chapter 19-4600 entitled Low Income Tax Provisions, providing for the refund or forgiveness of real estate tax liability of certain low-income residents attributable to real estate tax increases and increases in the assessed value of the taxpayer's homestead under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
This bill and all other bills that I did not vote on because I stepped away. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Shall be duly noted.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Lando?
Council President, I vote aye, and on all other bills, where I was absent. Thank you.
Shall be duly noted.
Councilmember Lazada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 17. The nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240061?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter further providing for mandatory annual appropriations for the Housing Trust Fund and authorizing and directing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lando?
Aye.
Councilmember Lazada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 17. The nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240370?
An ordinance renaming and designating the properly commonly referred to as the West Oak Lane Library located at 2,000 East Washington Lane as the Dwight Evans Library of West Oak Lane in the City of Philadelphia.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips? Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lando?
Aye.
Councilmember Lazada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 17. The nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240428?
An ordinance prohibiting the Commissioner of Public Property or any other official of the City of Philadelphia acting on behalf of the city from entering into, executing, or authorizing a lease extension, lease amendment, lease renewal, or new agreement by and between the city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for or on behalf of any Commonwealth department or agency at the properly located at 2,100 West Gerard Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 240428. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved and property seconded that the amendment to Bill Number 240428 be adopted. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240280?
An ordinance amending Chapter 10-2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hate Crimes to expand the scope of qualifying crimes under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Lando?
Aye.
Councilmember Lazada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 17. The nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240330?
An ordinance amending Chapter 21-1200 of the Philadelphia- An ordinance amending chapter twenty one dash twelve hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Citizens Police Oversight Commission to modify the procedure by which members of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission may be removed, providing a procedure to suspend members and clarifying terms in that chapter, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call? Absolutely, the chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to say before we take this vote, a little bit of clarification. One, I want to start with, no great document ever written authored doesn't get amended. Whether it's the U.S. Constitution, whether it's the city charter, we amend bills in this body every week because they're not perfect. And in order to make them better, moving towards perfect, we'd make such changes. This body voted to put on the, for a charter change, the creation of the Police Oversight Commission. Not that it wasn't good when it was an executive order offered by mayors before, but to firmly entrench this process in the city to create a fair oversight commission, we put it on a ballot, and a half a million people said this was the right thing to do. In creating a plane while you're trying to fly the plane, you miss some things. And what this amendment does is allow for a self-correcting process within that board to be able to say, you know what? This might not be the right process, you might have made a mistake, you might need to be off of this board. Not that this was designed for any one purpose, no person. And I thank Member Ketsi Lazada for being laser-focused on making sure that it wasn't designed to penalize any one person, but to improve a process. I thank you, President Johnson, for asking the question, are we giving up our authority and power as a council? As it says in the legislation, they may self-elect to remove a member, but they still have to come to this body for ratification. They still must come to city council for a final arbitration over their independent decision. So what this does is further reinforces the spirit of what we wanted. You and I and members of this body will also be a part of a process to fill the vacancies currently on the commission. And what we've learned is that you have to have a balance. It can't be all one-sided, it can't be all against, it can be all considering all options based on the merit of the decision. I want to thank also Member Lazada and Member Gaudier for correcting me because I said in a hearing, Philadelphia has to fix this before our George Floyd Philadelphia moment. And I was corrected by my members that said, we've had several of them. And thank goodness, we were able to manage through them without the negative results that we saw nationally. But however and nevertheless, we better fix this ship. And by giving them the tools to self-correct, I think it's the right thing to do. I think we still maintain our ability to oversee what is being overseen independent on the actions of civilian and police relations. And I think it's a good thing for us to empower them to do. It's like watching, and you're watching your children grow. They ain't gonna be perfect, but they need guidelines, guardrails, and boundaries. They're provided by us, and with that, I enthusiastically support the passage of this legislation. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero three three zero?
An ordinance amending chapter twenty one dash twelve hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Citizens Police Oversight Commission to modify the procedure by which members of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission may be removed, providing a procedure to suspend members and clarifying terms in that chapter, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips? Councilmember Gilmore Richardson? Councilmember Gautier? Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Landau? Councilmember Lazada? Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks? Councilmember Harity? Councilmember O'Rourke? Councilmember Driscoll? Councilmember O'Neal? Councilmember Squilla? Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Ahmad? And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Counsel will be briefly at ease as I acknowledge Representative Joe Hornstein, who is here in the chamber. Could you stand for us, Representative? Always good to see you, and thank you for joining us today. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero four seven two?
An ordinance amending chapter ten dash two thousand of the Philadelphia Code entitled Unlawful Manufacturing of Firearms to add restrictions relating to rate of fire acceleration devices, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips? Councilmember Gilmore Richardson? Councilmember Gautier? Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Landau?
Aye on all the future bills?
All passed bills, yep, shall be duly noted.
Future?
Are you ready to leave?
I have a press conference.
Would you like to ask for a leave of absence?
I would, Council President, can I please have a leave of absence and be noted as voting aye on all bills?
Absences, leave is granted, thank you, Ruth.
Councilmember Lazada? Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks? Councilmember Harity? Councilmember O'Rourke? Councilmember Driscoll? Councilmember O'Neal? Councilmember Squilla? Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Ahmad? Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero zero six zero?
An ordinance amending chapter nine dash eleven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protection Against Unlawful Discrimination to clarify and enhance protections against housing discrimination for housing assistant program participants to modify certain procedures for investigation of housing discrimination complaints and conciliation, appeal and election of civil action of all complaints filed with the commission, and to make related technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips? Councilmember Gilmore Richardson? Councilmember Gautier? Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Landau was aye. Councilmember Lazada? Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks? Councilmember Harity? Councilmember O'Rourke? Councilmember Driscoll? Councilmember O'Neal? Councilmember Squilla? Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Ahmad? Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. A majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. We will now proceed to consideration of privileged resolutions. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Gloria Twine Chissom, Ph.D., for her civic leadership and service to the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Gaudier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the champions of the week, the Fairmount Water Works Freshwater Muscle Hatchery for their research and efforts to improve water quality and aquatic life in the City of Philadelphia using lab-grown freshwater mussels, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And a privileged resolution honoring the fourth, the five fourth district recipients of the Lindback Award for Distinguished Teachers, Tyrese Holloway, Robert Smith, Michelle Shaw Carpenter, Garth Schuler, and Christina Kimmel, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and recognizing Tinesia Wilson for her outstanding dedication to education, community service, and her recent crowning achievement as Miss Philadelphia 2024, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
On behalf of the next Miss America, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Miller Parker and formerly declaring June eighteen, twenty twenty four, as Miller Parker Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring June twenty first, twenty twenty four, as Make Music Philly Day, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilman McArthur Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution on behalf of Councilmember Landau.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of Councilmember Landau, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and congratulating the Gerard College Varsity Boys Track Team for winning the twenty twenty four Metropolitan Philadelphia Athletic Association's Boys Track Championship, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And a resolution recognizing June twenty twenty four as Gun Violence Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution joining the City of Philadelphia and National Garden Week celebrating the role of nature in nurturing mental and physical wellness and recognizing the urgent need for garden equity across the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and recognizing Maya Benetende and Mark Maychek of the Edward T. Steele School as recipients of the twenty twenty four Lindback Award for Distinguished Teachers, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I enthusiastically move to the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please?
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine the sudden closing of the University of the Arts, the impact this sudden closing will have on the Philadelphia higher education system, and most importantly, the negative impacts on the current student body and staff, introduced by Councilmember Squilla.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I ask for a passage to the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution recognizing June tenth, twenty twenty four, as American Heart Association's Centennial Celebration Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions in my possession, Council President.
That completes our calendar for today.
Hey, hey, one, two, hey, hey, one, two, one, two.
Are there, I know we was here, we know we left like two in the morning. Any brief, are there any brief speeches on behalf of the minority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Okay, all right. Today, I introduce a resolution to affirm that city council supports sending public dollars to public schools and not to vouchers for private institutions. Those of us who attended public schools, who sent our children to Philly Public Schools and who have loved ones who work in Philadelphia Public Schools, we all know the truth that came out in last year's Supreme Court ruling. The state funding for our school is so inadequate that it is literally unconstitutional. Instead of directing all available resources to right this wrong and make up for decades of underfunding, some folks feel that resurrecting the idea of vouchers will divert public funds, which diverts public funds to private institution, exasperates educational injustice that undermines our public schools. As a longtime parent activist, I am very familiar with education privatizers who pretend to care about our communities so they can sell our parents on a fake promise of privatization. And I want parents to know the truth. Vouchers put public money in the pockets of the rich while draining resources from the public schools in our communities. Across the country, we've seen that the people who benefit the most from the vouchers are wealthy families who could already afford to send their children to private schools. Vouchers will not benefit the children in our communities or fix Pennsylvania's unfair funding system. Instead, they will deepen the economic and racial divides in Pennsylvania's school system and widen the gap between the rich and the rest of us. If you share my commitment to supporting our public schools, please consider joining me this coming Monday, June tenth, in Harrisburg. I will be standing on the steps of the Capitol with my labor partners, allies in Pennsylvania State House, community leaders across the state, and dozens of Philadelphia parents and students and teachers to say no to vouchers and yes to full funding, full fair funding of our public schools. This coalition of public education supporters has also created a petition, and nearly three thousand people have already signed on. If you support our public schools, you can also add your name at wfpus.com backslash no vouchers. We need Philadelphia public education community to come together to reject vouchers and defend our public schools because when we fight, we win. And speaking of fighting and winning, I also introduce a resolution today of two amazing educators from Edward T. Steele School Elementary. As many of you know, I got my political start as a parent activist fighting against the privatization of Edward T. Steele and many other Philadelphia public schools. Eleven years ago, people in my community decided that we were not going to hand over our neighborhood schools to a privatizer. Nikki Bagby, Charisma Presley, and many other parent activists in Knightstown came together to defend our public school against privatizers. We fought, and we won. And since then, I heard a lot of ugly narratives about our neighborhood public schools, that they are places of failure and violence and despair, and that the teachers don't care and aren't motivated enough. But the truth is that our educators are often the ones holding the schools together along with parents despite severe lack of resources. Until our neighborhood public schools have all the resources they need, all the resources that the school and other communities have been getting for years, we'll never know how successful they actually can be. So today, it brings me great pride and joy to honor not one, but two educators from Edward T. Steele Elementary School who have been selected by the school district for this year's Lindback Award of Distinguished Teachers. And I want to acknowledge the award winners, we call them Miss B, but Maya Benetende and Mark Maychik. And I want to recognize them for their exceptional work to support and educate and uplift Nice Town's young people. And I want to thank you for all you do to help hold our community together, and I want you to know that you are appreciated. I also introduce a resolution today to declare this week is National Garden Week in Philadelphia. Over the past month, in this room, we've heard from community gardens from dozens of gardens across the city who came out to speak about our urban agriculture plan and about the priority bid legislation that we successfully passed last week. This week, we celebrate the hundreds of community gardens across the city and the progress we've made together to protect and expand Philadelphia's green spaces. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardere.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues for giving final approval to two parts of my defying displacement campaign. First, we practice good governance by authorizing a ballot measure that would amend the Home Rule Charter to mandate that density bonus payments go into the city's housing trust fund as intended. The city code already says that payments in lieu of providing affordable housing must go into the housing trust fund. But the truth is that they usually end up in the general fund instead. This leads to a spike of buy-right multifamily or commercial development in our neighborhoods, but the size of the buildings are greater than what neighbors thought was allowed without a variance. That's because many developers gain additional density on their projects through zoning bonuses offered in the code. One of these bonuses allows for denser buy-right development if you make a payment to the city, which the zoning code says is to be used for housing trust fund purposes. However, not once since this payment-in-lu option began have these density bonuses led to a proportionate increase in the housing trust fund. As a result, we've been underfunding affordable housing to the tune of thirty-six million dollars over the past four years. And we sow distrust in our zoning process because residents see overscaled development with none of the affordable housing benefits the city and the developers have promised them. This charter change would ensure that we, as a city, make good on a commitment that the code already says we make. So thank you to my colleagues for giving our constituents the power to compel the city to follow through on this promise, for practicing good governance, and for recognizing the importance of fully funding affordable housing. Today, we also voted to strengthen protection for residents using housing vouchers. When my best friend became a teenage mom and needed somewhere to live on a tight budget, she applied for and received a housing voucher. Being housing secure allowed her to focus on her future. She earned multiple master's degrees and has been a teacher ever since. This story isn't an anomaly. It's just one example of the tens of thousands of Black and Brown Philadelphians, many of whom are single Black mothers, who have lifted themselves out of poverty because they had affordable housing when they needed it the most. But today, landlords overwhelmingly ignore the law and openly discriminate against voucher holders, preventing our neighbors from accessing the safe, stable, and affordable homes that are crucial for a successful life, healthy communities, and a vibrant city. As a result, up to one in three voucher holders cannot put their vouchers to use. That means working families have no choice but to surrender hundreds of dollars in rental assistance each month, which they are entitled to by law. Housing vouchers represent some of the largest and most direct means we have to combat our city's affordable housing crisis. And in a climate where we are losing hundreds of low-cost apartments every year and gaining hundreds more high-priced ones in their stead, vouchers are one of our best tools to level the playing field for working families. That's why I'm proud that City Council will no longer turn a blind eye towards rampant illegal discrimination against families using housing vouchers. I look forward to working with you all on the remainder of my defying displacement package, and I thank you once again.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, it is my sad duty today to make this announcement. Whenever you're raising, when you're growing flowers, whether you're raising puppies or kids, whether you're dealing with horses, you always can pick out one that you know is going to be special. But you know, as they grow, you're not going to be able to keep them all. Some of them after grow beyond the house, kids. And you have to be willing, when they bike, when you're running down the street trying to keep them balanced, eventually you got to let it go. Today, I rise to announce we have to let one go. And I didn't want to wait until next week to do it. I want to announce the successful departure of one Mr. Anthony Glass. As you know, he was my, is my legislative director, trained, handpicked by Judge Samantha Williams. She put her stamp of approval on him, and he is hit the ground running, and it's not been a disappointment. The CPOC legislation carrying it to its amendment, working on the blueprint for a safer Philadelphia, which probably gave him his one gray hair. I want to announce today proudly that he has decided to choose Notre Dame Law School. So in our office, we call him Babyface Nelson. Because I try, as a good parent, to raise liberal kids. He's a Blue Dog Democrat. He's more O'Neal than Jones. Grew up in the Northeast, and he is a very conservative individual. But it takes all kinds of voices to advise good policy, and we're proud to have him. He is going to be a lawyer. He's not going to be a defender. He will be a prosecutor. So you lawyers that are in the room today, if you are representing a client in the future and you see Anthony Glass come in as the prosecutor, you lean forward, tell your client, take the deal. We congratulate you, Anthony. You cannot be replaced, but you will be missed, but your presence has been felt by your work. Thank you so much for being with us.
Congratulations. Just from my lived experience, young man. Good prosecutors also seek justice as well, so always keep that in mind. Y'all catch that later on. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I want to thank the members of this body for passing a resolution recognizing June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. As we know, gun violence is uniquely American epidemic. And guns are the leading cause of death in young people under the age of nineteen years old. And it's no secret that I've lost loved ones to gun violence here in this city. And I just want to make sure that as we go into the summer months, we keep the pressure on to make sure that we get these guns, illegal guns off our street. We provide our children with opportunities to be successful and opportunities to keep their mind from being idle during the summer. So I just want to thank my colleagues for sponsoring and supporting that resolution. And also, this Saturday, we will be renaming the twenty-eight-hundred block of Gerard Avenue after Miss Lana Felton Gee. You're all invited to attend the ceremony. It will begin at one P.M. at the corner of Twenty-Ninth and Gerard. So please come out and let's celebrate the legacy of Miss Gee this Saturday at, again, one P.M., Twenty-Ninth and Gerard. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to rise to thank my colleague Curtis Jones and all the other council people here who voted to move forward the resolution to honor Congressman Brady. It's no secret that the congressman is, as we say, my political father. I've been working on and off for the congressman for over thirty years. And I'm just glad to see that we're going to honor him and give him his flowers while he's still here. You know, Brady, Bobby takes a lot of heat. You know, not only does he take heat for his own stuff, but he always takes heat for our stuff, too, those of us that are part of the party. And, you know, he gets beat up a lot for different things, but people never seem to say all the good stuff that he's done over the years as our party chairman, such as making the first LGBT judge, the first Asian judge, the first Hispanic judge. Our first LGBT councilperson, our first Asian Pacific Islander councilperson. And personally, I need to thank him for taking a chance on a little Irish kid from southwest Philly and giving him a shot. So I thank you, councilman, and I thank all my colleagues for doing this for the congressman. And I look forward to seeing it all the way through. Thank you.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Oh, President. I first want to thank you and my colleagues for the good humor and patience we exhibited yesterday when we pulled our first all-nighter for work for the people of Philadelphia. And I'm so glad we were able to pass the budget out of committee, and I appreciate that. I wanted to thank all my colleagues also and others who joined me in celebrating an auspicious milestone, the hundredth anniversary of the founding of the American Heart Association. We all know AHA for asking us to dress up in red for fundraisers and for the tremendous amount of awareness they have raised around heart health, but most particularly women's heart health. But that's just more recent chapter in a century of many breakthroughs in the ways we prevent and treat heart disease, understand the keys to cardiovascular health, keep people healthier, and help them live longer. We have known for more than, excuse me, half a century that limiting fat and cholesterol are essential to heart health because of the American Heart Association. The seeds of what we know about the harms of tobacco use were planted more than sixty-five years ago with a scientific study published by the American Heart Association. And more than half of the people in this room know exactly what to do if someone experiences sudden cardiac arrest because of the American Heart Association. They have invested over five billion dollars into cardiovascular research. Those investments led us, led to the awarding of ten Nobel Prizes. So I don't think it's a stretch to say they have done more to deepen our understanding of heart health than any other organization on the planet. Congratulations on one hundred years of progress and improving our collective vision of health and hope. Thank you so much for all that you do, and I wish you many, many years of health advocacy and discovery in the future. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good afternoon, Philadelphia. Just want to say something really briefly. I want to thank our colleagues for passing out a committee this week. And a very important legislation is the Encroaching Tree legislation. When I first joined City Council, I made it a priority to really find ways to be in neighborhoods and listen to our neighbors. And one of our neighbors, Phyllis, really spoke on the importance of this tree that was having an encroachment on her property and other people's properties, and it was causing quite a danger. But the laws and policies in the city did not allow for the city to really take down that tree. So now, we are in a position where not only her tree, but countless other trees are going to be set to be favorably passed hopefully next week to really, really make sure that we are successful with helping people want to stay in Philadelphia because we're taking care of quality life issues. In addition to that, we did a curfew bill in the Logan area, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Cindy Bass and Alleni area and so forth. Also, we did a curfew bill in the West Oak Lane in Mount Airy area, all because we want to make sure that we have quality in our neighborhoods. And I'm looking forward to seeing how that bill helps us bring the right businesses and the right serenity into our neighborhood. And I just want to thank the residents of the Ninth District for pushing me and also our team so that we could do the work of the Lord for them. So we're looking forward to continuing to support all of our neighbors in the Ninth District. You call, you ask for something, it happens because we care. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Council President, am I the last one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to just do everything in one hunk, if that's okay with you, Council President?
Yes.
Real quick, on your behalf, I just want to remind councilmembers and the listening public that the Adunde Festival is this Sunday at twelve o'clock at Twenty-Thirty South Street. If you don't know, it's one of the biggest festivals in the entire country. It's an amazing time. And on the behalf of the Council President, just want to encourage people to come out. Since I have the mic, I do want to just take a moment to thank all of the tech staff, the council president's staff, Sergeant at Arms, all the council staff, the cleaning staff as well, too. Thank you, Councilmember O'Rourke. A lot of people don't know when we decide to stay until blah in the morning that the staff has to stay as well, too, and then get back up the next day and, you know, continue to move with a smile and the same effort that we expect. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. And with that being said, Council President, I make a motion that council stands adjourned until Thursday, January thirteenth, at ten A.M. sharply. June thirteenth, I'm sorry. I make a motion that council stays adjourned till June thirteenth, ten A.M. sharp.
Can we get a second? It has a moving property second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at ten A.M. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you all very much.